Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the voter, to hear directly from our candidates about issues that are important to our community. This is all leading up to the general election, where voting starts early on October 13th and goes until Election Day on November 3rd. For our interviews, we took questions from the community via social media and email. We're going to talk about the shakeup in city government, how COVID is affecting our community, and confronting social injustice on a local level, and much more. So we have a lot of questions to cover. I doubt we'll even get to all of them, but let's jump right in. Today's guest is Eric Wiseman, and he is a candidate for City Commission. Hey Eric, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, thanks Kathy, and thank you and the Plant Board for creating this forum for us. I know we're all getting used to the new normal right now. So like you said, I'm Eric Wiseman. I'm currently City Commissioner, serving, this is now 20 months in the position, and six of those, of course, during worldwide pandemic. So it's been an interesting journey that was not quite what I expected when I signed up a couple of years ago. But was born and raised here in Frankfurt and grew up here in Bald Knob and in the downtown a bit too. And have greatly enjoyed being able to serve my community, my hometown over the last year and a half. So looking forward to hopefully continuing to do so and helping this town be what I know it can be in the future.
Excellent. So besides your experience already being on the City Commission, what experience do you have in your past that you feel like has prepared you for being on the City Commission?
You know, years ago, I realized fairly young that whatever I did in life, it had to be to help other people. And that, you know, some life circumstances later on, loss of some family members and things, I decided that that was my life, was my journey, that I had to find ways to develop my passions and to serve my fellow man. So for most of my career now, I have in some way worked with the public through volunteer roles. I've always been very active in volunteering and continue to do so through nonprofit ventures. I'm the Executive Director of a statewide historical preservation group that I think most people know about. And, you know, volunteered through a number of other roles, including several here board positions here in Frankfurt and Franklin County, and some across the state. So, you know, I joke quite often that I give away all of my time, but truly it is what I enjoy most. And, you know, working with people, trying to develop initiatives and gather cohesion and consensus is a difficult task. And it takes a very unique skillset to be able to do that in a manner that just doesn't become over frustrating at times. And of course, at times it can, but it's what I enjoy and what I really love. And, you know, that experience has led directly into the commission. It really is almost identical to nonprofit work in a lot of ways. Probably more responsibility in terms to a broader set of people that are defined with the 27,000-plus residents in our city was a little bit of a leap, but it's, I greatly enjoy it. And it is, it's fun, really, I believe. Some people call me crazy, but fun to talk about issues that are addressing our city. And I actually really get energized to talk with our citizenry about ways we can create creative avenues to direct change and for the better. So, you know, all that experience has set me up for this role, and hopefully I get to continue.
Well, speaking of change, since we last spoke, the City Commission has fired our City Manager Keith Parker. So my question is, why can't Frankfurt keep a City Manager on a long-term basis?
You know, I was looking recently at the list of City Managers for the city. You know, the city of Frankfurt was essentially forced into City Manager form of government in 1959 when a change in the legislature got rid of class systems for the cities. But, you know, traditionally, a lot of the information nationwide says that City Managers are an average of two to four years. And in looking back at our history of the last five or six City Managers, we're averaging four years plus. So we are right in line truly with a lot of the national average. So I don't know if it's us. There is some information that suggests that smaller communities have a faster turnover for whatever reason. So, you know, it's maybe a position, something I would actually like to do is to better define the role. I believe Frankfurt has very poorly defined the role of City Manager, which is up to the elected officials. And that's probably been partially to the benefit of the elected officials over the past, that they can manipulate or move through the inertia more effectively to their benefit. But, you know, some communities that have a City Manager, like Bowling Green, generally sort of called the gold standard in Kentucky. You know, we're doing a fairly poor job in comparison to them in defining the role. Unfortunately, I was overruled in better defining the role this last time, but hopefully in the future that will change.
Okay. Well, according to the Kentucky League of Cities, only about 5% of Kentucky cities use a City Manager Plan. So what are the advantages of a City Manager Plan? And do you support that form of government? Or would you support a Mayor Council Plan?
Yeah, you know, I've looked at that pretty extensively over the last year and a half, two years even. And surprisingly, none of the communities around us have a City Manager form of government. Shelbyville, Georgetown, Louisville-Lexington, of course, Versailles, Lawrenceburg, Simpsonville are all a different form of government. So it is, of course, what we have, what we are to operate under, and I support it fully as the current system. If we wanted to ever change, it would have to be a vote, of course, by the entire citizenry of the community to change that. But perhaps there is a discussion that should be had. I'm not saying whether we should or shouldn't. I've got a lot of feedback about that lately, of course, but, you know, there is something to be maybe discussed that growing communities around us have a different form of government, and maybe that needs to be evaluated.
Okay. Well, how do you think the City Commission should handle the search and hiring of a new City Manager? Should the current leadership go ahead and fill that position? Or should they wait until the new leadership is in place?
You know, I think it would be short-sighted to just allow or just to kick the can down the road to the new leadership. Potentially, the entirety of the board may be new and inexperienced. And I think that would really set our community up for failure. I think we need, as I believe we're planning to do, or I hope that we're going to do, a bit of a hybrid model here that will begin a search and hopefully have the input of the next election commission, which I hope will include me, to create some continuity of government rights in that search process and hiring process, that hopefully the next election commission will be able to come in and give input into the hiring process as well, and sort of have all of us together. I know when I was elected last year, we were allowed to come in and sit in for the last two months of that commission and give some input and have some feedback into the process and some of the items that they were discussing at the time. So I think that would best serve our community as a whole right now.
So what do you think the city should look for in a new City Manager?
You know, we've got to have a skillset that can absolutely run without punches and address some of the big issues that we have going on. There is so incredibly much movement across our city at this time that things are changing and developing for the better in the way that we all want. And it takes, it's going to take someone with a lot of skill to be able to jump into those projects and effectively maneuver the implications of things like the $12 million Tiger grant project on Second Streets that will be hopefully breaking ground next year. The $100 million development of the Capitol Plaza, in numerous projects across the city, and not to mention, of course, the repercussions of COVID and whatever financial implications that's going to have that we're not quite seeing yet. So someone that's well-rounded, hopefully has a really great skillset, a history that can absolutely hit the ground running.
Okay. So this has been a hot-button issue in our community. It's been troubling for some. So if elected, re-elected, what would you suggest the City Commission do to boost public confidence in city government?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I have been adamant that we need more inclusion of our community in the decision-making process all around. I've been disappointed in the level of participation over the last year and a half, and have been effectively pushing continuously to have more input in that process. So I think one of the best things we can do is to get out in the community more and to be a cohesive body that tries to take input from the community. It's difficult right now, of course, and I know we're all extremely frustrated, including myself, with the implications of having televised meetings and that that's the format that we have to operate under. But, you know, we are effectively the leaders and the example for the community. And given some of the implications of COVID, we just can't do anything else at the moment. So I am proud of pushing at the very beginning of my term to begin live streaming all of our meetings for the first time in many, many years. And we've been doing that consistently to create open government to allow the community to see exactly the decision-making process and what's happening and what our discussions are. And that's created some havoc, you know. At times, there are controversial issues that we're trying to work through and talk through that the community gets upset about before a decision is even made. So I think we've got to do a better job at educating our town a little bit about maybe the legal process and understanding what implications are and how frankly, you know, our city government is made to work and the legal issues that we have to follow. So I think we can do a much better job. And, but I'm glad in the steps that we have, proud of the steps we've made so far. But we've got a lot more to do, of course. And I think more input, even though it's cumbersome, like I said, I come from a grassroots background for the most part. Including the community is a messy process, but I think the end product is so much better when we have more input and more of our citizenry able to help in making decisions for our communities.
Okay. You mentioned the need for more transparency and the ways to do that and things that you've done to encourage more transparency. So do you feel like there was a transparent process in the firing of the City Manager?
Yeah, you know Kathy, I would have liked to have done it differently. Of course, there is a five-member body that ultimately has to make the decision. And you don't always get your way. And you don't even usually get part of your way. But I would have liked to have handled that in a different manner. Unfortunately, I did not have the majority in that aspect. But I think as far as it could be done, we complied with the contract that was written and agreed to with Mr. Parker. And beyond that, I really can't say much more. You know, legal counsel has advised us multiple times that we had advised, or, you know, that we complied with the contract and we fired for no cause, which is a legal determiner, so that Mr. Parker doesn't have a tarnished record for future positions. And so beyond that, I really can't discuss it anymore, unfortunately. But I would have liked to have.
Okay. Sure. So if elected, will you support the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee tasked with the identification of opportunities to improve the functionality of city government, including its overall structure and roles and responsibilities of elected and appointed managers?
Likely, likely. You know, that's the first time I've heard that exact question. But like I was just saying, I want to involve the community more in the process. You know, I was reminded of a couple of years ago when we were hiring our Planning Director, and we invited community members in to meet the candidates and to give a scorecard and give some recommendations back. And I thought that worked incredibly well, and the community was very excited about that process. And I think this is the community's, you know, body, and we're the elected officials to represent the community. And involving them more in processes would be appropriate and exciting, frankly. I'd like to hear more feedback and not be sort of in a silo as, you know, we have been at times. So absolutely.
Okay, great. Here in Franklin County, we're looking at more than 500 positive cases of COVID-19. Do you feel like the city leadership has taken an effectively aggressive role in slowing this spread here locally? And what more can the city do?
You know, this is, of course, the most challenging aspect of our service right now. And it has weighed very heavily on me. Every time I hear there's a passing, it is, it's emotional. And I feel very responsible for what's happening and what we're doing and how we're combating this. And I know people in my position across the world are feeling the same way right now. You know, I think we have taken every foreseeable step that we have available to us currently. Unfortunately, of course, some folks just don't understand the reasoning in some of those steps, and it makes it more difficult. But I think we are handling it about as best we possibly can at the moment. We've got some incredible staff in our emergency management office and our health department. And, you know, we are in many ways the test case, of course, for the rest of the state, as always, as the capital city. And we have been pretty actively engaging with state and federal officials to create pilot programs. We had some of the first testing available in the state here in Frankfurt, right? And we've been the pilot, quite literally, for some state program rollouts. So no one can quite explain why numbers and cases are going up in some areas and not others. There's just not enough known about this virus yet and about, you know, how it affects its host. So I just ask everyone, of course, to remain vigilant and please try to follow the policies that are set forth by the city and county and the state as best effectively as we can. It's really up to all of us, of course, right? The how that this plays out in our history of our town is going to be determined directly by each and every one of us. So I'm proud of what we've done so far. I wish that there was more that we could do, of course. And I think there's going to be a number of programs that we're working on to roll out that are relief programs and assistance for our struggling businesses and our people. So I'm hopeful for that very soon.
Okay. Well, beyond affecting our community's physical health, it's also affecting the mental health. CDC indicates that younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, and essential workers have reported having experienced disproportionately worse mental health conditions and outcomes, increased substance abuse, elevated suicidal ideations. So what efforts can be taken at the local level to address these associated mental health conditions?
Yeah, you know Kathy, I think we've all struggled with mental health issues. I know I have, I've struggled with some depression of recent and just trying to make the best out of our new everyday lives. I think our city's taking some good steps. You know, one I will promote and push here is that the Police Department now have an Angel Program that I wanted from day one when I got elected. But if you have substance abuse problems, mental issues, and want to go to a police department, you can ask for help and give up, you know, maybe whatever paraphernalia or substances you might have and get into a treatment program. But beyond that, we don't have enough to deal with these. And this has been my biggest fear, not to mention homelessness and housing issues that have been exacerbated in our community of recent. But there just aren't enough resources out there yet. One, I've been talking with our police chief, and police groups across the nation are looking at bringing in social workers or counselors. I hope that we can do that more quickly than later to help with those exact issues. We don't have the resources on staff that we need to effectively deal with this issue. And nowhere, frankly, in our community is there the resources that need to be in our health department or otherwise. So we've got a lot of creative work to do very quickly, and it's not business as usual. And unfortunately, we have an election in the middle of this that's probably falls at the worst possible time for continuity and creating new programs.
Well, speaking of needed resources, you know, four months ago, we discussed the looming economic crisis that would result, you know, as part of the pandemic. And now we're seeing that negative impact, for example, like occupational taxes.
Yes.
So if elected, you know, what do you see as moving forward with the budget? What are going to be the tough decisions that the City Commission is going to have to make with the budget?
You know, it truly hasn't been as big of impact and impact as we expected at the city. Because of the timeframe that the pandemic has fallen so far, we weren't able to hire on so many part-time positions that we usually do in the summertime to run our parks departments. And so the gap has leveled to a degree from what we weren't spending. So that was a benefit for us. Of course, it seemed like everyone in the community was showing up with their pet projects about six months ago, asking for some of our surplus fund, which is there for this exact reason. So we are in a better position than most other cities. You know, our size or even larger in the rest of the state. So I'm hopeful and optimistic that if we have a turnaround in employment soon, that those shortfalls will balance out and we'll use some of our reserve funds to make ends meet, if you will. But beyond that, you know, we have to be, even before this, we just have got to begin critically reviewing our expenditures and finding ways to effectively invest in good rates of return. You know, I was proud to lead the charge for some funding for a few initiatives like the new YMCA that I believe will greatly return on its investment to our community. Of course, the TIF that we're discussing next week for the downtown developments, we again are probably better suited than most cities because we have the potential of $100 million investment in our town that's going to generate brand-new taxable revenues that we've not had for 50 or 60 years in that area with property taxes and employment taxes and new people living in our town to workshop and play and all those things. So I'm optimistic that we're going to be better than most, but we've got to be very critical. We've got to really spend some time on our budget and combing through that thing. I was not happy a few months back that we just blanketly approved, and I voted not to, a budget for the current year because we didn't have the rates of return on taxes just as yet. So I'm willing and hopeful that we will be very, very critical and hopefully before the end of the year, we'll have a full budget review.
Okay. Moving on, this summer, after the deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, our country saw a rising movement in calls for social justice. So my question to you is, do Black Lives Matter?
Of course. All God's creatures matter, right? And we were all created equally in his image. So anyone that would suggest that there's a difference is simply blind, I believe. You know, I was very proud of Frankfurt, and I have to give some credence to Katina McMillan and Jordan and their entire crew who organized the Black Lives Matter rally here in Frankfurt. I was incredibly proud of them and everyone who attended that, that we had a very peaceful, organized, thoughtful, and educational event here in Frankfurt that could have went much differently, of course, as we've seen nationwide. And I walked the whole thing, even with a hurt foot, and was incredibly proud of our community in that moment.
Sure. How do you feel the city rates when it comes to effectively addressing social injustices? How can we improve? And are there certain steps that should be taken here to ensure equitable racial justice?
Of course, everyone can improve. We can, we have great room to improve. But I have to think that Frankfurt, I'm always bragging on us, but I have to think that we are, we're doing better than some. We have regularly, regular opportunities to discuss racial issues in our community. And that's in part thanks to Frankfurt Racial Relations Group and Kentucky State Forums and things like that that keep it on the forefront of our minds about how we can take steps to improve our position and create a more fair and equitable community. You know, I think one of the bigger issues in our town that is directly a part of racial issues is our poverty rate. You know, 1 in 4 people in this town live in poverty, and sometimes as much as 1 in 3 by some estimates. And I just think that creates a pattern of, you know, social issues and societal issues that we're not effectively addressing. And I think that is not only racial discussions, it is housing options, it is affordable housing, it is employment opportunities. And I think one of the best ways we can combat is something I've been suggesting and been working towards is that we more effectively work with our university to retain some of the best and brightest that come to Kentucky State to work in our jobs and through that, creating some social programs. I've been talking with President Brown recently about creating an adoptive program where citizens of our community might effectively adopt a freshman each year to sort of engrain them and help them meet more of our community citizens. But also an internship program. I think we've got to start effectively with our youth, getting them knowledge and access to jobs and to experiences. We can do much better, but it's going to have to start early, I think, and come up through our children over the next 20 years. And I keep setting a goal of 2036, which is Frankfurt's 250th anniversary, to effectively combat many of these big societal issues.
That's long-term planning.
That is, 16 years from now.
So you mentioned Frankfurt's low-income population. I want to ask you, what, do you have a plan to address Frankfurt's low-income housing problem?
Yeah, yeah.
And if elected, would you support a city ordinance which adopts the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenet Act, which other cities have done?
Yeah, actually, I've been researching the act and have Shelbyville's as an example that I've been reviewing, and I hope to bring it up before the end of the year. We should have already adopted that. I think as a city with more than half of our built structures or housing opportunities as rental, it's imperative upon us to come up with some ways to effectively combat some of the substandard housing that's available in this community. And we all know houses in neighborhoods that are far below the standard that they should be. But I was proud, actually, when I got elected, I asked the mayor to sit on the Housing Authority Board in his stead. And so I've been attending those meetings for the last year and a half. And we've been discussing ways to update and provide new affordable housing in the community. And I don't think that is all state and federal programs or even local programs. I think we've got to come up with ways to enable local developers or would-be developers to improve their housing stock if they own properties already or to build new affordable housing. And hopefully, there will be a plan before the end of the year or the beginning of a plan by the Housing Authority to look at ways that we can effectively address the housing shortage. And in fact, I've been putting together a working advisory group dedicated to just this issue. Homelessness is a big factor of this, of course, as well. But I believe we could effectively stamp out homelessness by building and providing affordable housing that would actually in the end save our community money for the resources we put into addressing homelessness. So I'm excited to have more of those discussions across our community and with this advisory group in the very near future. And we've already had a number of discussions about, you know, what the actual need is in our community. And it's hard to, hard to fully grasp. And I'm quite concerned that the impacts of COVID-19 will exacerbate the problem even more[1753.77] as we have people just barely hanging on and able to, to make their rent or not able to and what that's going to mean for, for those folks. So I, I have, have a hope that there will be some federal programs coming that we can take advantage of. And if we effectively get our act together now, that we might be ahead of the trends and, and able to meet the need in our community better.
Okay. As funding has been reduced for Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. and KCDC, do you think this minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to attract and support businesses to Frankfurt? And what can the city do to support these agencies?
Yeah. You know, I fully support the mission of those organizations, but I have to wonder, especially now with the impacts of, of COVID, if we don't need to take a, a critical review of the agencies as they existed or have existed in the past, you know. DFI was founded or began as a Main Street program, which they no longer are, which had some, some monies that were available to them at the time and then some assistance as being an accredited program. But that was began in the seventies here in Frankfurt. It's one of the first in the nation. And DFI, of course, was began in the nineties as an industrial authority, which is, is still legally their, their task. Of course, they've defined their role as, as something else. But I believe it's time to take a critical review and set up new institutions that are going to lead us into the future. And one of those specifically that I've been wanting to see developed is a community foundation or a, or community development corporation, sorry, for Frankfurt, for the city independently that focuses on, on small business development and recruitment and the, the fostering institutions that will help build the, you know, the businesses of the future and help those people that are, are able and capable of, of creating new, new businesses in our community that are going to lead us into the, into the future. So I'm, I'm open for a conversation. I'm hoping to have a conversation about the, the current entities and their, their task and how we might more effectively morph those into what is going to be required to, to build our future. Because I think Frankfurt's changing and I'm, I'm happy it is at the moment and we're, we're, we've got an exciting future. But I feel like the, the institutions that were passed aren't effectively or maybe going to effectively address the needs of our future.
Well, I appreciate you being here. So I'm going to turn it over to you now and let you address our viewers and tell them why you're the best candidate to be on the city commission.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And again, I appreciate you all, you all doing this. You know, as, as I said, I'm a hometown candidate. I grew up here and I'm absolutely dedicated to Frankfurt. And there's been a lot of rumors circulated and a lot of discussion of past and, and very recent time that are, are outright lies. And it's unfortunate that some candidates decide to, to lead in that manner. And I, I want to say that I am a leader for our community, listens to our community, that I retain the integrity to lead by example. And I'm going to go over my, my four bullets here. The honesty to keep our citizens informed and engaged. Determination to set and exceed goals for our future. And by 2050 or 2036, our 250th anniversary, I know we're going to look back and say, wow, where we've come in, in 15, 20 years. And most importantly, a vision to see our potential and to lead us into the future and, and strive for more. So I've been working very hard for the last year and a half. And I, I have to say, I, I would hopefully have put in more effort than any of the other commissioners to make great strides for our community to, to address the big issues that we have. And, you know, I'll, I'll say that I will always fiercely defend this community from anyone that would prefer to benefit personally over, over the, the good of the community. So I've been making hard decisions. Sometimes those aren't popular and sometimes leading isn't a, a popular activity. But know Frankfurt that I always have your best interest in heart and will always defend you and give myself, no matter what it is, to, to make this town reach its full potential. Thank you again for, for having us and the hard questions.
All right. Well, thank you for your time today. I know that our, our viewers appreciate hearing from you.
Absolutely.
To our viewers, I'd like to thank you for watching because it's very important that you get informed before you either mail in your ballot or go vote early. So we appreciate you watching and we'll see you next time on Meet the Candidates.